The notice of quorum provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice is promptly given, state notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and Star-Ledger on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city's clerk's office. Clerk Van Royckhoff.
Councilmembers Armani.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Present.
Councilman Digg.
Present.
Councilman McCray.
Present.
Councilman Storch, his absent general role, Vice President Hockaday.
Here.
And Council President Millsruss.
Present.
We have six members present and call our president.
Please rise to the pledge of allegiance and remain standing with the implication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will, and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of Act 2, 15, 2019?
Agreed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Communication from the mayor.
Yes, court's offices have been received the executive order number one from the Senate Mayor directing the following: The administration will not hire any additional administrative assistants as committed by special charter. Number two, administrative assistants shall only be hired pursuant to New Jersey City service guidelines that existed prior to the amendments adopted by Senate Bill 2763. Number three, no current administrative assistants will be activated by this executive order. Number four, the executive order will take effect on October 21st, 2019. That concludes the presentation, Mayor.
Finished business.
Ah, yes, we have an update from the police director on the four-way stop signs.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I want to give a little bit of a history of the implementation of the four-way stop signs. Brief history of the four-way stop signs. These stop signs came about due to complaints the division received with regards to speeding in different areas throughout the city. We also did and still do traffic enforcement when these complaints are received. So after some traffic review, and in some of these areas, we implemented nine four-way trap, ah, nine four-way stop signs in 2016. Then in 2018, nine, four, nine more four-way stop sign intersections were introduced throughout the city. Now that this analysis has come about, now this analysis came about at the request of the city council of some concerned citizens who felt four-way stop signs caused more motor vehicle accidents within the city. What I would like to be clear about is in our analysis, that any increase or decrease in most areas was minimal, or with other enforcement being used, you cannot say that the differences is a result of the four-way stops. With the four-way stops being fairly new in our city, educating the public on the proper way to use them is what will make the difference over time within our city. So what we did with the first section of the four-way stop signs, I dubbed as Phase One. In Phase One, we started in 2016. So we went back four years, from 2012 to 2015, and compared that to 2016 to 2019. And looking at the analysis of it, the overall number of incidents dropped over a course, over a amount of 24 if you compare the first part to after 2016 when they were implemented. The next, you go to the next. The next phase was implemented in 2018, so we look back two years from 16 and 17 and compared it to 18 and 19. And when you look at the overall analysis with the, with regards to incidents that have occurred in that time, they also dropped by 14, incidents by 14. As I said, as I stated earlier, education is the proper way to proceed. When you, education on the proper way to proceed, when we approach these intersections will be the key to having the four-way stop signs throughout our city. This will help in any other concerns that we have with traffic violations. So with that, we have a video that I would like to show of four-way stop signs. I also have flyers that will be passed out, or there's some at the back as well, if you would like to take them on the proper usage of the four-way stop signs.
Hi, my name is Colin Fleming, and this is the human process at a four-way stop. When approaching a four-way intersection, every driver begins a process of thought in order to figure out how to safely move through the intersection. However, it can still be difficult to judge exactly how you should interact with others in particular situations. This is Amy. She is driving to the store when she finds herself coming up to a four-way stop. She knows she needs to take a left-hand turn, but her surroundings will dictate when it is safe to do so. Some situations are passive involvement. This includes elements of the environment that will not directly impact her route. However, she must still be aware of their presence. This can include cars that have indicated they are also turning in a way that does not cross paths with her vehicle, or pedestrians who are crossing in a non-intrusive manner. Most situations, however, are active involvement, which will include vehicles or pedestrians who may cross paths with Amy's destination. The driver must also be aware of vehicles that intend to turn but have not given proper signals to do so. Similarly, pedestrians who are crossing either in front of Amy or to the left of her will also cross paths with her vehicle and must be considered before moving forward. The proper etiquette for a four-way intersection is to bring the vehicle to a full stop, signal the direction the car is moving, and make it clear to vehicles when you plan to go to avoid confusion. At a four-way intersection, the right-of-way always falls to the person on Amy's right. If by chance four cars stop at an intersection at near the same time, the first car to reach the stop will begin to go. However, the driver may want to be cautious in this situation. The cars would then go in a counterclockwise pattern thereafter. For pedestrians, they will also have the right-of-way and should be given a proper amount of time to cross before Amy continues. Weather can have several effects on four-way stop intersections. The general rule of thumb is to simply be more cautious of other drivers in bad weather conditions. Wind speeds and precipitation in high volume can limit Amy's view and make it harder for her to determine other vehicles' actions, as well as that of pedestrians who are more likely to run into her way in order to get out of the illness quickly. The vehicles' interaction with the road can also be affected by weather, as it can lessen the friction, making the vehicle less predictable if the driver's not cautious. Another condition to be cautious of is sun position, as it rises and sets. This can cast light directly into Amy's eyes, affecting her vision and making the intentions of other drivers more difficult to see. The opposite is also true. In fog or at night, there is always the possibility another car has neglected to turn their lights on. This can affect the caution necessary when approaching an intersection in these conditions. This concludes the human process at a four-way stop.
Thank you. As I said before, I think education is definitely the key of the four-way stops. The four-way stops are being used all throughout the country. They're just fairly new to the city of Plainfield, and with the different traffic concerns that we get as far as speeding and things like that, they do seem to be helping. So I would just hope that we continue to get that education out there for our citizens. Thank you.
Um, yes, so this was a great presentation tonight, but what are the steps moving forward to educate the rest of the community who may not be here?
Well, like the video we have, that's something we can share, maybe share on our website as well. We have been, at our last event, passing out these flyers, so usually now wherever we go, we take these with us as long, you know, along with other flyers that we have for different things. So we'll just continue to get it out there because it is new to our area, and there may even be times where we may have to implement more, so we'd just like the education to get out there. Thank you.
So, in terms of the intersections, it almost looks as if, you know, one of the stops that I frequent most is rural and rock. It looked like there was an increase. So, are, is the administration doing anything to take a look at them, and then, you know, maybe decide that they're, they're not needed in that stop?
Well, as I said before, there's no way to look at the increase as something to do with the four-way stop signs as a result of the four-way stop signs, because if you saw the numbers, they were fairly high before these stop signs. But what we may look at is the congestion that it causes, more so than the fact that there was an increase in accidents. It's mainly a congestion, a congestion in that area.
So where the increase is, what's going to be the adjustment? I mean, are they working in those areas?
As I said, there's no way to tell based on our numbers that the four-way stops are a result of those increases. Yeah, because if you look at each area, they were all kind of consistent, even where there's a decrease. There, there's a decrease in one area of 16, parking at Arlington and Knight, and I would love to take that area and say, yes, it's a result of the four-way stop sign. But there's no way to say, because there's other things that we do, like traffic enforcement, signage, things to make it more visible, that it could be a number of things that could equate to the drop. So just like I can't give it to the drop, I can't say that it's a result of the increase as well.
Will we be able to add copies of this slide? That you just, that was just. Okay. Thank you.
It's probably a provision.
So is it on site or some, some manual?
No, 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 this is the copy that I have.
Okay.
So you, you can request a copy from me, and I'll get it.
Thank you, Director Rivers. And I'd like to say that, is that the same brochure you had, the safety note?
Yes, it is.
And that got great reviews from the people over there who received that copy, so hopefully all the council members and those persons here will get a copy of that.
Clerk President.
Yes.
And as a public service, I would be directing the administration to make sure that this is not only posted on our social media, but on our PCP lead to be played over and over and over.
Oh, you know, that's good, Mayor. And one of the suggestions of what the residents, uh, this president on that Saturday, was that maybe at least one time a year, run it in your weekly.
Oh, we will definitely do that.
Consideration of public hearings, second reading, and final passage.
Yes, we have M.C. 2019-26, this is an ordinance, City of Plainfield County meeting, saying in Jersey adopting the TODN North Avenue Plan Amendment. It's hereby certified with the notes of the public hearing, and this ordinance was published in Courier-News on October 27th, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Saying no one, current Ford. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on a second reading and final passage? And if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law. Roll call, please. I mean, I'm sorry, second. Okay, roll call please.
Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Millsruss.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage?
Mr. Clerk, please read 2019-27, by title of verve certified, that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
M.C. 2019-27 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 16, Labels and Traffic, Article 12B, Handicap Parking Zones, Section 1, Designation of Handicap Parking Zones, Block 7, 26, Block 13. This ordinance was published in Courier-News on October 22nd, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. Saying no one, current Ford. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call on M.C. 2019-27, councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Good. Yes. McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Millsruss.
Yes.
This ordinance has been adopted on second reading and final passage.
Mr. Clerk, please read Bond 1269, by title of verve certified, that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
Yes, bond ordinance number 1269 is a bond ordinance refunding bond ordinance authorizing the issuance to not exceed $600,000 in aggregate principal amount of refunding bonds, and refunding notes by the City of Plainfield and County meeting City of Jersey for purpose of funding and verve certification. It's hereby certified with the notes of the public hearing. All this bond ordinance is published in Courier-News on October 22nd, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance.
Denise Pagley, 124 East 7th Street. Um, over my past 30 years of before in Plainfield, it seems to me every time part of money is awarded in the settlement, the identity is, is numb. And this seems to be one where there's no disclosure. Is, is there a reason why, or can anybody speak to that?
Council President Millsruss. Yes. Thank you. This, uh, this backdoor award is not the result of any settlement. It is the result of a criminal matter which was dismissed, and therefore there was no settlement degree before the governing body, and that's why, uh, no resolution was adopted prior to the need for this money as part of this bond ordinance.
Saying no one, current approaching the mic. May I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So be.
May I have a motion to adopt?
So be. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Armani.
Yes.
Davis.
Done.
Good. Yes. McCray.
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday.
Yes.
Council President Millsruss.
Yes.
It's five in favor, and hold this on this to adopt it on second reading and final passage.
Public comments. A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments limited to resolutions and ordinances being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. Okay. Saying no, one attempt to the floor. May I have a motion to close? Second. All those in favor? Okay. Clerk, would you please offer the resolutions?
Uh, yes, we start with resolution 315-219, authorizing the renewal of contract with Horizon Group, New Jersey.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Have a question. Um, so for this resolution, it says that it's contingent upon the 2020 budget, so I just, I guess I'm seeing a clarification on why we're doing it so early when we don't pass the budget until like next year.
If they dug it good, you'd have.
Sure. Uh, we need to give the carriers notice that we are going to review, uh, these plans. That's why we're bringing this before the council at this time.
Okay.
Subject to approval of the actual dollar amounts later on.
Thank you.
Any other questions? May I have a motion? Uh, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I know it's not that cold in here, wake up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution 316-19, authorizing the renewal of contract with Ethno Dental of New Jersey.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Uh huh.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution 317, authorizing the renewal of contract with Ethno.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, so there's a resolution later in the agenda about moving to the state health plan. How would this portion of it be affected?
Uh, none of these three are affected by the state health plan. These are all separate plans.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Do my, do my, do my new motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution 318-19, authorizing approbation for ruling in our health state.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution 319-19, authorizing settlement in matter of annuals similar versus the state by law.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any exceptions?
Resolution 320-19, authorizing the appointment of lines trust company.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Agreed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Standing.
Resolution R. 321-19, authorizing approval, approval for submission of necessary documentation to rejoin the state health benefits plan.
Question? Um, so Director West, I noticed in the correspondence that, um, to, to use Edna the difference card, they were projecting an increase. So how much of a decrease are we expecting by using the state health benefits plan? Because I know at one point we left them, so we're going back.
Just to give you a complete summary, the proposal from Edna was going to represent a 10% increase. And so what we're looking at now, and we're still finalizing all of the, you know, alternatives available to us, but we're looking at saving inaccessible $1.5 million.
Is this something that we look at from year to year, or is this going to be for a, you know, a longer time period?
Unfortunately, the answer is yes. Insurance companies tend not to want to lock themselves into a multi-year contract when it comes to health benefits.
Okay, so we'll operate year to year, and whatever's in the best interest of the city financially, we'll go there?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's the plan.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, with us rejoining, but first, Mr. Weston, just, I guess, give us a history of why we left the state health plan to begin with, and with us rejoining, you said we're going to look at it year to year. Is the, is joining the state health plan giving us the flexibility that if we need to leave and come back, like, are we able to do that on a year-to-year basis?
Uh, not so much a year-to-year basis, but, uh, and it would certainly be difficult, you know, going back and forth. It's not our intent to do that, but, uh, as, uh, Councilman Armani brought up, we've got to do what's best for the city. So in, in terms of trying to control our costs, we have to go out and look and see what's best for the city.
So Edna gave us the best price when we left the state health plan before?
Yes, we were facing both a reduction in benefits from the state health benefits plan, plus a significant increase in cost. We were talking about going up a couple of million dollars.
Um, also, how would that affect people who are already getting Edna?
Edna will not be the provider of the insurance coverage, so we would be moving back to the state health benefits plan, and Horizon is the carrier with them.
Right, how does that affect elected officials as well?
Going by the state statute, elected officials will not be eligible to be a part of the plan.
So in the paperwork, um, attached to the resolution, it said that, um, elected officials couldn't cover if they worked, um, if they worked less than 35 hours a week, so, like, how does that affect us up here? Because, like, when it's put in prime point, it says they work 35 hours a week, so how does all of that work?
This is not about prime point. I would recommend that you not challenge how many hours you, you work, because you have health insurance as an, as an option through another employer. So the intent is that elected officials, or I would recommend that elected officials here not try to make a case that they should be included in the plan going forward. I don't think it would look good.
I was just, you know, trying to get the full scope of everything that was going on, but thank you for your recommendation.
That was a personal opinion.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions?
One more problem. How would you compare the quality to both plans? Are they very similar? Are they comparable?
One of the components that we look at whenever we make that kind of decision is, you know, the matchup of the factors. And we also look at the, the benefits offered. I can tell you that the reason we are looking at the difference card and other alternatives to be included is because, you know, we are required by contract to, you know, match, you know, the level of benefits provided by the state at, at a minimum of what the state provides. And I can tell you that the benefits that we've been providing have exceeded what's offered by the state.
What other questions?
Question. So you said it was a $1.5 million savings. Is, well, how much was the increase in dollars if we stick with the Edna plan? We were looking at $2 million. But instead, we're saving $1.5, that's correct. So that's 3.5. That's significant savings.
So moving forward, you would find it in the city's best interest to state, where it would be savings as opposed to an additional cost?
That's correct. The one thing that we've done over the last few years is to try to make, uh, you know, a zero impact on the taxpayers for the cost of health benefits. We haven't changed the budget line for health benefits in several years. And now what we're talking about is looking at alternatives that may allow us to lower it.
I have another question. So this resolution is simply for the submission of the documents to rejoin. So after we submit them, um, does it come back to the council to say, yes, we are going to rejoin, or it doesn't, like, oh, we submitted the documents, and so now we're just rejoining?
We will be, we will be back to the council with whatever ancillary, uh, options we bring to the table to complete the level of benefits being offered. So whether it's the difference card or some other option, we will be back to the council.
So...
We don't have to do anything else relative to the state health benefits plan.
Okay.
But we will be back because there are other components to the state health benefit, I mean, to the health benefits option.
Okay, so potentially we can join the state health plan and then still come back for the difference card or what other stuff comes in, so we don't have a say after today about health benefits, just whether or not we fulfill our performance? Is that possible?
What I am saying is we don't have the complete package of, uh, relative to the health benefits. So we will be back to tell you how we will guarantee that the benefits being offered are comparable to or better than what is being offered by the state. You know, at a level, we will need the difference card, you know, but we've got to enter into a contract agreement with them, something that won't be done in the past. So we will have to come back to talk about the difference card or some other option that we come forward with to complete our whole set of offerings around health benefits.
Okay, so maybe I'm not asking my question clearly. So there's not going to be a time that you come back and say, okay, these are our options, Edna, state health, and then whatever health insurance company X over here.
No, this is that authorizing resolution. This is that action.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Still be it. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension?
Resolution R three twenty-two nineteen is adopting a current action plan.
Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three twenty-three nineteen authorizing transfers between calendar year twenty nineteen appropriations of general fund.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three twenty-four authorizing approval to amend the calendar year twenty nineteen business budget by.
Are there any questions?
So this is money that the city is getting back to go back into the budget?
The city was awarded two grants, one for bulletproof vests, the second one for uh social services for the homeless. So we're we're putting, we're making appropriation in the budget to give them. We have to put it into the budget to spend it. And that's what this process is doing. So they they there will be efforts now to go about to spend that money.
So they.
By invest and uh providing services for the homeless.
So yes, it's it's just money going into the budget?
Yes, a- a- any grant, any fund grants that are expended in the budget must be first and served by way of chapter one fifty-nine resolution, which is part of the budget law.
Okay.
So in order for us to use that money, we have to do this resolution.
Okay, so yes, it's money going into the budget.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion?
Still move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three twenty-five nineteen authorizing cancellation of the tax subsidy.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three twenty-six authorizing adjustments that resulted in refunds for properties.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension?
Resolution three twenty-seven nineteen authorizing purchase vehicles for the plan for fireworks.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Um, so uh can you just explain um what's the matter with the vehicles that we have now and why um is there need for just some vehicles?
Uh, there are three vehicles being purchased uh ranging in age from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand and four. And we thought that this was a good time to replace those vehicles.
Okay, so what's gonna happen to those current vehicles that we have um now?
Two will be retired and one uh will be put into other service use of the department.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
When you say retire, what do you, what, not the passenger, I mean where's where's the go? Scrap.
On some side.
Uh, look to see what resale value we could get for them.
Something.
For it.
Something.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is there? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extension?
Resolution three twenty-eight authorizing change order number one for a decrease to match construction.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three twenty-nine authorizing change order number one for a de- a decrease to basketball.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Director Daphne, can you just talk to why they're decreasing? Like, it's not a bad thing. I mean, it's great that the city is saving money. But is there a reason why we have so many um resolutions for decreasing the projects?
Well, to show that based on the unforeseen, it was not, you didn't have to use as much asphalt for certain projects, it was as-built material wasn't utilized. You didn't need that. So that was just, that's what it saves.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty nineteen authorizing change order number one for the hand-hackings of basketball court facilities.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-one nineteen authorizing the award of professional services contracts for marine to marine engineers for the C U B G F Y twenty-five we're servicing of Saint Mary's Ave project.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-two nineteen authorizing the award of professional service contracts for marine to marine engineers for the Marshall three round free play area improvements.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-three nineteen authorizing approval for a leased place of these property again.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-four authorizing the submission and acceptance of a grant from the S N Y Play Ball.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, you have a question?
Just a second.
Okay, oh, second, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-five authorizing the submission of application to New Jersey Transit.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-six directing the planning board to reexamine the South Avenue East redevelopment.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-seven, three thirty-seven nineteen doesn't name certain properties as non-commodation area in the area development.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so just for clarification, um, we're including City Hall Annex and the fire department located on Central Ave in the area in need of redevelopment. Um, what exactly does that mean? And that can a developer come and say, hey, I wanna buy these city properties? Like, if you could just explain why they're there and what that means exactly?
We did not include the City Hall Annex and the uh fire department in the non-commodation area. Do you have the? It's not included in the non-commodation area.
May I have a motion?
Move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three thirty-eight nineteen doesn't name certain properties of the combination area development.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, how many of those properties have residents that live in them?
I don't know the answer to that question. I'll have to get back to you. But in the condemnation area, it's mainly businesses uh that are impacted uh by the non-commodation area, as I recall. But I would have to get back to you. Uh, between the two resolutions, there are over a hundred and twenty-five properties. And so uh very few of those properties uh were residential properties, but I would have to get back to you with the specifics.
Um, also, one of the properties in the condemnation area?
Mm-hmm.
Um, is a daycare and it's my understanding it used to be, I guess, like the first police station or something in Plainfield. What are the historical implications to having that in the area?
So in properties in the redevelopment area, whether it's condemnation or non-commodation, we will abide by our historic preservation commission and state and federal rules related to historic properties. So we will maintain uh the historical portions of all structures.
Um, also, one of the area.
One question. Which block and lot is that or which address are you?
Um, four hundred Cleveland Avenue. Um, also, for one twenty-three dash one twenty-nine East Fifth Street, um, the planning board, I believe, just approved a project over there. So how does this, the zoning board just approved the project over there. So how does this um impact that?
Okay, so that project was approved approved under the current zoning, uh as is required by law. And uh there is no other zoning at this point in time for that particular area. So this is just asking you to designate it as an area in need of redevelopment. Then would follow a redevelopment plan, which would would redefine redefine the zoning for this particular property. But likely, uh what was approved mixed-use would be part of the redevelopment plan.
Okay, so just for clarification, there's enough, there's no zoning over there?
No, the current zoning ordinance is what applies there.
Okay.
At that particular location. This is just the study portion. And until the council adopts a redevelopment plan, the zoning will remain the same.
Okay, um, also, in the redevelopment studies, um, a lot of the properties had um problems. But um yet the code enforcement study of the, the code, the code enforcement portion of the study wasn't really extensive. Um, and how come we can't solve some of those problems that these properties had through code enforcement?
Uh, what we looked at was the redevelopment statute, which has eight criteria for establishing a property as in need of redevelopment. So the study does speak to why it was selected to be part of uh of the redevelopment area. So for each property, the study uh defines why that property is included in the redevelopment area.
Okay, and uh finally, can you just explain once again how condemnation works? So um if we approve this, it's considered condemnation and then what are the next steps or the potential next steps for uh the residents and the businesses in that area?
Okay, so the um, the next steps, I I did explain this at length at uh the redevelopment forum. And I will be glad to share the presentation uh on our website. But condemnation is about ownership, uh it is not about use of the property. And so when we talk about the uses of the property, that will be defined uh according to the redevelopment plan. And condemnation is about ownership and if it's, if it becomes necessary to facilitate the acquisition of properties for redevelopment, that's when condemnation would be called into play. Uh, condemnation is something that's taken very seriously, not lightly, because the costs of doing condemnation are expensive for the developer as well. So what we try to do is make sure that there is a meeting of the minds about acquisition of the property. The city will assist with that uh for con- condemning any property.
Does the city have a vision for what they want to see in this area?
Uh, yes, that's being uh defined now. The planners are putting together the redevelopment plan, uh which will go before the planning board. Uh, if this is adopted as an area in need of redevelopment, it will go before the planning board in December.
So, um, my concern with the condemnation plan, I know you said that there are a lot of businesses in that area, but there are also in fact residential units in that area. So what happens to those residents? So my concern is that if condemnation does take place, we're taking away people's homes just to build mixed-use development in that same area. And the reason why we wanna redevelop is probably the exact same reason why those people chose to live there in the first place.
So according to uh the redevelopment law, uh we have certain obligations as it relates to the relocation of businesses and uh residents affected by a redevelopment plan. So that is not a matter of condemnation or non-commodation. That is a matter of if someone has to be relocated for the redevelopment, then there is a relocation plan that goes into effect. Uh, now, timing on all of these is not that every property overnight is going to be redeveloped. There are some that have already been acquired by developers and there are some owners who are willing to develop their properties themselves. So it's not gonna happen overnight as they transition to to complete it. Uh, so we'll see some things happening in the next, if this is adopted, in the next two to five years. So it's over a period of time uh that things will begin to change. So those that are immediate are properties that developers have already acquired or property owners who are ready to redevelop uh once a plan is approved.
So if we have redevelopers there already acquiring the properties, um, that means that the appetite is there for redevelopment, then why do we need to have a condemnation plan, please?
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay. That was more of my opinion. Okay, um, yeah, can I get a motion?
So be it. Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Do you have that, sir?
Uh, yes, that was five in favor on moves. Resolution passes. Resolution three thirty-nine nineteen directing the planning board to conduct an investigation for one twenty dash one thirty-two Wayne Ward Park.
Any questions?
Yes. Um, can you just explain, I guess, the rationale of picking this particular uh street to conduct and like, or this particular area to conduct an investigation on?
Yes, so we are currently amending uh the Marino Track uh redevelopment plan. This property is uh adjacent to the Marino Track. It is currently a lighted property. And so what we'd like to do is look at this property uh as part of a study. And then if it fits the criteria, then add it uh to the Marino Tracks, so redevelopment plan, which means it would be governed by the same rules and regulations as the Marino Track.
Can you explain the Marino Track and what that is?
Uh, that is a redevelopment area uh on uh 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 West Front. Uh, and so it's currently, it's an existing redevelopment area that has been a redevelopment area for a while. Uh, and we're currently amending it to update uh the redevelopment rules and regulations uh for that particular redevelopment area.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three forty nineteen directing the planning board to conduct an investigation for one twenty-one through nine J five South Ave, about south of Sedition.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions?
Resolution three four one nineteen directing the calendar year twenty twenty operating budget for these special.
Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, how do we come, how do we come up with the number one hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and twenty-three? Like, I know it's, is it in the taxes? Um, so like, how do we, how does the city get their money, basically?
You wanna take that one on, Mr. West?
Yes, there's a special assessment charge to those businesses. Uh, and uh so all of the properties that happen to be members of the uh special improvement district. And so, all of the properties that happen to be members of the Special Improvement District, they get a special assessment. And so, that gets collected by the tax collector. And on a recurring basis, there's a request from the city for those funds.
So, how will redevelopment in those areas affect, like, the city budget and how much money gets to go there?
So, as the value of those properties increase, we will look at the assessment for the property owners that are within the city geography. And so, again, that's as the value of those properties change, then we'll look at that as a way to increase the city budget, basically.
Also, to answer your question, the city itself presents explosion. That's not something that's established by the administration.
Okay, but I guess also, if we're redeveloping, right, and there are not businesses there because we're redeveloping, then is the burden now put on the remaining businesses that are there? Or do they get less money, how does that work?
The taxes to the property owner, not the business. So, the property owner, as we develop, property owners may change, but that's who's given the special assessment.
Any other motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution 34219, authorizing the submission and acceptance of the CBNG 2020-121 Act.
Are there any questions? Do they have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution 34319, supporting the eradication of human trafficking.
Any questions?
Yes. So, first off, I would say that this is a great resolution. I'm glad that Department of Health and Social Services is leading the charge on addressing global social issues at the municipal level. The resolution is important because when you begin to learn even just a little bit about human trafficking, you realize how easy it is to happen right in front of you. And it's important that we take stances like this everywhere, and we should ensure that everyone we do business with is representing the values that we hold yours and municipality. But how logistically will we be able to enforce this? Is it more of an honor system, or how do we enforce this resolution?
So, it's a couple things, and thank you. This has been a combination resolution. My director on my right hand, Director West, helped me with coming out of a plan to how to address this. Within our bid process, there's a section called general terms and conditions. And in that, we will place the language as you find in there. We expect the vendors and contractors to adhere to. So, for instance, when they go through the bid package, they have to sign on actual documents. They may have read the document, they know what they're submitting, and that they will adhere to it. We ask them to adhere to all federal, state, and local laws concerning human trafficking, so the expectation is upfront. The other thing that we possibly can do is, if it's a snake vendor and they get struck off for whatever reason, we are notified, Director West is notified, and then we can stop doing business if we are doing business with that, that hits wrong. This is a small step. We would love to expand it, but we have probably, the laws are currently, they'll approach it right now.
Also, in human trafficking, are we, I guess, training employees, like inspectors, health inspectors, code enforcement inspectors to spot, or even the police department to spot potential human trafficking situations?
Yes, so, we will have a more robust process in 2020, but what we're initially going to do is work with the public facing offices of the Department of Health to help to identify. They're not going to be permissions, they're going to see what it is and be able to refer. Then, we're going to roll out to the rest of the employees in the city of Plainfield. I know that the police department already does that, so they're already trained. The fire department, I'm not too sure, I have to talk to Director Childress about that. But the goal is to make sure that every employee has at least a minimum one hour of training in identifying as best they can.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do they have a motion?
Moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution 34419, authorizing the city of Plainfield to enter agreement with Rutgers Medical School Global Personal Health Institute.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution 34519, recognizing a member as American immigrant.
Are there any questions?
Yes. So, once again, Director Brown, another good resolution for diabetes is something that affects a lot of people in the community. Does the Health Department have any plans for World Diabetes Day, which is on Thursday?
So, what we do generally, as we recognize national health events, is that we put out on our social media. And so, we either put out things to look for, ways which to get tested, how people and your family can help you identify or help you if you are particularly impacted.
Any other questions? Do they have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution 34619, authorizing the board of contractors to enter agreement.
Any questions? Do they have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We now, for items, introduction of witnesses on first reading. We now come to ordinances on first reading. Mr. Clark, would you please read ordinance MC 2928, what's the title?
MC 201928 is an ordinance adopting a fifth amendment to the redevelopment plan for the original 1997 city-owned, in foreclosure of bankrupt properties, but are removing 28 current 78 properties that are hurting them to get their zoning. Retain 50 properties pursuant to local redevelopment housing law, subsequent to NJSA 48. Colon, 12A, dash, warrants, entire sequence.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes. So, on the list of properties to remain, there are at least two properties that, one, that are city-owned, but one is currently a parking lot, and the other one is where the signaling division is. So, they're on the list to remain within this ordinance for a site redevelopment plan. Is that intentional, or is that a mistake, or?
So, this is part of the 50 that remain?
Yes.
Have you have any others?
Yes. 401-411 Cleveland Avenue, and then 401 Central Ave. 401-405 Central Avenue. And they have them listed here as vacant, but one is where the signaling division is, and the other one is now the parking lot that the police division is currently using.
The 1997 redevelopment plan predates a number of us here. It's been a plan that's been around for a while. What we have been doing is systematically removing properties from the 1997 through auction. What we will have to do in terms of the remaining properties, the remaining 58, is look at what properties are related to the signal division. That may be something that occurred post this plan. So, I will look into that back at the office. But what we're trying to do at this point is just reduce the number from the current 78 to, how much?
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight to 58.
To 58. So, those properties that are still on the list, we haven't done that analysis of those 50 to see which should remain, but that's part of the process.
So, the ones that we took off were the ones that were auctioned off, I guess?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Altered or, hence, redeveloped.
Okay, so another amendment could come back to us potentially with the other ones coming off?
Absolutely, as we build down that 50, we will come back to the council.
Thank you.
This is to fit the man to the original ones.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, yeah, extend a motion to adopt this awareness on first reading?
So be it, second.
Clerk Van Hooch?
Councilmember Ronnie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocken?
Yes.
Council President Lou Renson?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading.
For 2019, 2019, please.
Yes, MC 201929 is an ordinance amending Chapter 11, Article 7, Section 11, Colon, 7, Dash, 5, the municipal court of state of Plainfield, Jersey, 1971, to reflect employee pay increase increments as set forth in the political waiver agreements.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes. How does this affect current employees and what will be the physical impact to the city?
This has no impact whatsoever on the employees. We're not modifying any of the pay plans. There's language or a phrase in the ordinance dating back, I think, to 1988 that says, people process pay increases in accordance with the 11-step plan. We have moved away from 11-step plans, and this ordinance basically removes that language, which references the 11-step.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion?
Moved. Second.
Clerk Van Hooch?
Councilmember Ronnie?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hocken?
Yes.
Council President Lou Renson?
Yes.
This ordinance is going to be adopted on first reading. A public hearing on these two ordinances will take place. Targeted by the City Council on Monday, this summer.
The total of 60 minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk with a racket. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes.
Johnny Hurchardt, formerly 723 Orange and Avenue in Plainfield, 410 Spruce Avenue, Garwood. Two things I'd like to address the City Council. First of all, we just celebrated Veterans Day, and we must think of those who are serving our country, sons and daughters of Plainfield or in uniform, defending our freedoms. We must back them up all the way. We should have done that during war, during Vietnam. We lost 16 of Plainfield's sons during that war. Those who came back, that were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that word Nazi retired once and for all. The poor brave soldier that are despised, Norcan as a stranger. Remember, he says, "Country, stay and day in our danger." And secondly, we need to get the hospital up and running again here in Plainfield. We need to reactivate Milenberg. We must have stopped to those that plan to build condoms on that Milenberg site. What if another line of attack occurs? If it does, we'll need a lot of hospitals very, very badly. I mean, very, very badly. We need to, we need to reactivate the hospital. And the sooner we activate Milenberg, the better off we all would be. They're letting us up there.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ray Narm Wolf. I own the property Block 138, Block 2, that's how it began. I came here to develop that property in the Rock View Heights section of Plainfield. From the time I submitted my papers, and it was accepted, and I began building, and, by the way, I am a veteran, and that home there I built with my own two hands. But immediately, the building department began to do all types of illegal acts. Well, the property began 138, Lot 2, and all of a sudden moved into 2.01. How did that happen? Well, the houses on Wilver Street never owned their backyards. They removed an African-American from his property, built those houses illegally, and waited for him to die. And then they put up their fences as if they owned it. The city sold me this property for a cost of $500. It was immediately added to Block 138, Lot 2. Joseph Menaravich began to do all types of illegal things, and I began to see a lot of illegal things. For instance, the address of the home that I built is 203-207 View Avenue. Most of us know that on the outside of the street, it always begins 201. Well, as a little boy growing up there, I noticed that that little tick mark off the corner was, grass always grown there. What happened? That's 201. The people who used to own the property pay off someone within the planning board. They take a little money, subdivide the corner, and the property taxes on that property are forever low. Well, that selling of the rear of the other properties on Wilver Street was given to me, hoping that I would take the corner to cover up their crown. I don't have much time here. My son's an engineer, graduate of NJIT, and we wish to develop in this city, and that was our first development. I'm under contract with the city to put low-income housing there. Now, to interfere with that development is a sickness. My paperwork submitted into the building department somehow disappears. How is that? Approval, and then my paperwork disappears. For the past 16 years, I've been trying to complete that development, and I've reached only interference. Do we want development? Do we want it? Do we want to bring our children in to allow them to build this place properly and not illegally? All the houses on Wilver Street, from the illegal multifamily on the corner all the way down, you see the houses burned out? Why would anybody pay $180,000 for a house when he doesn't own the rear yard? The other two houses, they're just sitting there, outsiders are coming in milking it. You can't build a house in the city of Plainfield on 25 foot by 30 foot. How did those houses go there? This is Rock View Heights! And yet, the people who live there are forever held. The house sold for $98,000. The rest of the community is bound to that because they're illegal in the first place. And we walk by it and we act as if we don't see. I'd like to approach some of the council members and bring the paperwork, my blueprints, and inform them about what has been happening in Rock View Heights, in the city of Plainfield. Does anybody here know where Rock View Heights is? No, because most of us are trained from racism. East and less. But in the city of Plainfield, we go by names. Everyone knows Sleepy Hollow, everyone knows Nebwood. Why isn't it that no one knows Rock View Heights? If you stand on that hill at Rushmore and look directly west, you'll be looking right at Washington Route. That's why that area is called Rock View Heights, not the West End, and not the playground of any corruption. and not the playground of any corruption. Thank you for your time. Any of you councilmen that would like to sit down with me and look at the paperwork and find out why this development is not going forward? Thank you.
Good evening, all may of math and county members. My name is Mrs. Laverne Barrett, and I reside at six thirty-six Del Ave. I've been a resident of Plainfield for many years, and I'm also a member of the Plainfield Civic Trust. Plainfield Civic Trust is an organization dedicated to citizen empowerment and public service. For a number of years, I have been working with Mr. Paul Riley and Ms. Joyette Mansell who have a traffic light slash four-way stops sign at the intersection of Plainfield Ave. And Random Or Road. At my recent Civic Trust meeting, I had a light bulb on it. Plainfield Ave is a county road. At this time, if any of you can give me a contact person in Union County to address this concern, it would be most appreciative. Thank you in advance for your cooperation.
Seeing no one else approaching the mic, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Oh, pardon.
Um, if the lady who just spoke will see Mr. Dabney, who is the director of PBW, after the meeting, we can provide you with information relative to the concern that you raised. And the gentleman who spoke before you, if he's still here. Yes, um, if you can let us know when you acquired that property, the history of it?
Yes, sir.
Because I believe we are all hearing about it for the first time.
Yes, sir.
It would be interesting. You mentioned sixteen years ago.
That's when I started developing.
It seems like it has dated back for some time. So if you can provide some information to the city, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, neighbor. All right, uh, may I have a list for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Oh.